Well, we have one of the one in this.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
Chloe said she doesn't know why she's here. Said I bet it'll be something special.
It feels good.
I haven't touched anything.
It feels good to me.
I haven't touched anything. I'm not freezing, but I'm sure everybody's sweltering.
Usually I'm freezing, but I'm gonna...
I feel, I feel good.
I have not tamed with anything.
That's right. If I feel good, it's probably warm in here.
And I really makes that she think something must be broken.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this February 4th, 2020, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. It is six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask that this evening that Councilman Alexander lead our invocation... Oh, he's chewing off our invocation. I'll keep talking for just a minute. Do our invocation, then Councilman Overton is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So when Councilman Alexander says stand, we shall. We may stand. Please stand with me.
That's great. By God, once again, we come to say thank you for this beautiful day, the rainy day. We thank you for all the trials and our tribulation. We thank you for the city council and what it stands for. Now, Lord, we pray that as I be in the midst of this meeting, let everything we say and do be pleaded in your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray in every heart's head.
Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen, please. Our pledge today is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kettelf, you can call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Phan.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the January 21st, 2020 city council meeting. Have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from January 21st, 2020, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Minutes are approved unanimously. Next is public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone may come forward and address any item that's on the agenda. There are three public hearings tonight, one on Patriot Angels, one on an amended preliminary master development plan for Kennesaw Farms, and another is a 3.85 annexation east of Coles Ferry, north and east of Coles Ferry. So if you have interest in any of those three items, it might be best to address them under the public hearings. Otherwise, public hearing on agenda-related items is now open, and you may come forward at this time. Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll say public hearing on agenda-related items is closed. And proceed now to Mayor's comments. I'm going to begin tonight with a proclamation, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Chloe Warren to join me at the podium, because I have something to present. And she is always beautiful and always smiling. Uh, I want to tell you, it has been such a pleasure getting to know this little lady over the last... Is that insulting, I hope? No, I don't mean it to be.
No, no.
But this precious young woman over the last several years, she is always smiling, always friendly, always generous, and always makes people feel so special. She is truly a bright light in our community, and I don't think coincidentally she has an organization that she calls This Little Light of Mine, and, and she basically helps spread love and lets everyone know what their value is, encourages others. And she is a great encourager, especially to be the age that she is and over the last several years, even as a much younger teenager. But I am delighted to present this proclamation to you. This says, whereas Chloe Warren is the daughter of Jessica and Anthony Warren and resides in Gallatin, Tennessee, and whereas she is a senior honor student at Gallatin High School, who is very active in her community with several philanthropies and organizations, and whereas Chloe is a member of the Student Council Executive Board at Gallatin High School and also a member of the Gallatin High School Performers' Chorus, and whereas she has created an organization titled This Little Light of Mine to spread love, kindness, and support to people of all ages, and whereas on Friday, January 17th, 2020, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, during the 2020 Tennessee Association of Affairs Convention, Chloe was one of 54 young women ages 16 to 21 from across Tennessee to compete in the Miss Tennessee Fairest of the Fair competition, and whereas she was crowned Miss Tennessee Fairest of the Fair 2020, I, Paige Brown, therefore do recognize Chloe Warren on her title and ask citizens to join in offering her best wishes for the coming years as she travels through the state promoting her platform and spreading her message of kindness. So I'm so honored to present this to you, and not only was she the Miss Tennessee Fairest of the Fair, she was also our Miss Sumner County Outstanding Teen, and you've had several other titles too. Is there anything you want to say?
I just want to say thank you so much, Paige Brown, for those kind words, and it has been such a blessing to be able to represent the state of Tennessee and to represent Sumner County. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Well, we are so proud of you, and I would ask you all to join me in a round of applause for Ms. Chloe Warren. And I'll proceed now with Mayor's comments, and this really has been a week where we have, where I have had the opportunity to see some outstanding young people in our community that make me so excited for our future, because there are all kinds of great youngsters doing really fabulous things in our community. Last week, Station Camp High School hosted their very first Every Kid is a Hero Day, and it was an event that was dreamed up by a couple of teachers, supported by the Sumner County Youth Leadership Council, which was students from all the area high schools, and they had this day of activities and celebration that culminated in a company called Epic Starfish Comics, giving each child their own comic book in which that child was the star of the story. So it was for all the special needs high school students in our community, and so they worked to put this day on, and it was really fabulous. And I know that you've probably seen a lot of coverage on social media and in our local media, and really want to congratulate all those who worked on it. It took a lot of volunteers. The staff at Station Camp High School was fabulous. Our police department and fire department participated, and they did a, added... They were a great contribution to the day, and so I was just really proud that that happened. And then just this morning, there's a young girl at Union STEM School who has won the Prudential... Oh, where did I, I wrote it down, the Prudential Community Spirit Award for the entire state of Tennessee. And this is a young girl named Lucy Blaylock, who makes blankets for people all over the world when they have something in their life that is challenging them, and she makes these love blankets and sends them out. And so Prudential has recognized her. She is going to Washington. I think she, I hope she wins a national award. But certainly, it's pretty great that a elementary school student in our community has been recognized as the state winner. She won a $1,000 scholarship, and Principal Lance Taylor over at Union had a wonderful assembly for her today. So these were just some fun things that I've gotten to share in, and I want to share with you. There are a few events coming up I want to tell you about. There are two free food giveaways coming up at Triple Creek Park from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., happening Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Also on Thursday of this week, there's going to be a joint city council and planning commission work session. We'll be working on Plan Gallatin, happening at the gathering place from 5:00 until 7:00. I do want to mention that Godspell is being presented at Volunteer State Community College. I have not seen it yet. I've heard it's a fabulous production. It's being put on by the Actors Point Theater Company. I'd encourage you all, if you have the opportunity, to go see that. Next Saturday, there's a scouting for food drive at First Presbyterian Church. I'm assuming that's put on by the Boy Scouts over there. Also out at Bledsoe Creek State Park, there's a Blacksmithing in America Tennessee History Trail presentation. So that might be something fun to do with your family this weekend. Those are just a few of the events. Finally, I'll mention that Kim Baker and I are embarking on a, on a new effort to help people learn more about Gallatin and hear us talk about Gallatin. We're doing a bit of a talk show format, be online on our various YouTube channels, and I'm sure they'll be pushing it out through social media, too. We're calling it Baker and Brown, and it's basically two gals who care a lot about this community, sharing, two gals who care a lot about the community, but also have a lot of information about the community, trying to be a little bit entertaining and helping people who live here feel more invested as stakeholders and utilize, putting them in a situation where they can utilize the opportunities that are here and enjoy their living here experience. So that's starting this week, so look for it. With that, that would conclude Mayor's comments. We'll move on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda this evening is public hearing on ordinance 02001-3, and for that, I recognize Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing. This is an ordinance, City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning 40.38 acres from Planned Business Park District to MU Mixed Use District with a preliminary master development plan for Patriot Angels Phase Two located at 262 and 280 Harris Lane. Authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas for peeling conflict of ordinances and providing for severability, and this is a public hearing.
So public hearing on ordinance 02001-3 is now open. You may come forward if you would like to speak on it. Okay, I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I'll declare the public hearing on ordinance 02001-3 closed. Moving to item two, which is public hearing on ordinance 02001-5, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a .62 acre portion of a parcel from the PGC Plan General Commercial District to the CC Core Commercial District, and approval of an amended preliminary master development plan for Kennesaw Farms, parcel A totaling 14.05 acres located north of Nashville Pike and west of Kennesaw Boulevard. This is a public hearing.
Okay, this is public hearing on ordinance 02001-5. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time. Now, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so public hearing on ordinance 02001-5 is closed. Item number three is public hearing on resolution R2001-1, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a reservation of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, and actually a portion of Tax map 134, parcel 001.03, consisting of 3.85 plus or minus acres located north and east of Coles Ferry Road. And the City of Gallatin authorized the annex area to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, authorized the assignment of the annex area to the council district, replacing conflicting ordinances or repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for effective date. Public hearing is open.
Thank you. This is public hearing on resolution R2001-1, and you may come forward if you wish to speak at this time. Okay, I see no one. So public hearing on resolution R2001-1 is closed. We move to item number four, which is resolution R1912-63, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services upon the annexation of a .64 acre portion of a parcel located north of Big Station Camp Boulevard and south of Springdale Lane, and a .82 acre portion of Big Station Camp Boulevard, public right-of-way, and providing for an effective date. Public hearing.
No resolution.
Oh, resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
I'm gonna abstain on this just until we hear the report to make sure that we're compliant on annexations.
Okay. Anyone else wish to discuss? Okay, this is resolution R1912-63. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Note that we do have Ms. Love abstaining. Moving to item number five, which is resolution R1912-64, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, resolution of the City... Of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, annexing .64 acre portion of a parcel located north of Big Station Camp Boulevard and south of Springdale Lane, and a .82 acre portion of the Big Station Camp Boulevard, public right-of-way for a total of 1.46 acres into the City of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assigning the annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, this is resolution R1912-64. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Are there abstentions? Abstention by Ms. Love. So it passes with one abstention. Item number six is second reading on ordinance 01912-62, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a portion of two parcels totaling 87.34 acres from the PGC Plan General Commercial District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and a .64 acre portion of a parcel from the Estate A District to PGC Plan General Commercial, and approval of the preliminary master development plan for McCain Station totaling 130.78 acres located north of Highway 386 and east of Big Station Camp Boulevard. Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion. Is there any? I do have one comment that I would like to add with this. You know, I don't, you've heard this from me before. I don't like rezoning to multi-MRO in such a, especially with so much acreage. However, in talking to planning, I understand why it makes sense to do this. I just would ask that this council, in the future, with any of these developments that we have approved for MRO zoning, that when they come back and want to make changes, that we understand why we approved that in the first place and don't go down the road, well, they have MRO zoning, let's, you know, then they allowed that by right. But I think they're allowed what they're proposing, which fits within the zoning, and that's fine. But, you know, we just need to remember as we go down the road and years from now, people come back and want changes. This is not the same thing we're looking at on some of these MRO zonings that exist. So that's just my two cents on that. Anyone else? Ms. Love?
Well, this may have already been answered, but when I added up all the different homes, it's 684. And with a conservative estimate of one and a half cars per each of those, that would be about, I added adopted. I figured 1,026 more cars. Says that the traffic study must be approved by the city engineer, so I wanted to know what the city engineer thinks of that.
Well, I will address that this is a preliminary master development plan, and I think that comes to a later stage. Do you want to speak to it as well? That would come with the final master development plan. It's when they'll have the traffic study.
It just seems like we're adding a whole lot of traffic into a high-traffic area already in a high-density...
But yeah, you're correct. That is when the, the traffic impact study is required at the PMDP stage, so...
FMDP.
Or, I'm sorry, yes, FMDP. I'm sorry, yeah, FMDP.
So we, we need to go ahead and approve this before we know...
Yeah, the preliminary comes before the final.
So we're, we can vote on the final one later?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't vote anything?
The mayor's saying yes. You're saying no.
But...
This is second reading.
All right, but there'll be a final master development plan that go... Mr. McCord, help us.
Yeah, this is the second reading.
Okay, but this...
This is the way it's always been done.
But it's the preliminary master development plan, so there's a final.
There is a final plan, but it goes through planning and all that.
But that's when the traffic study occurs?
Yes.
And then planning, it reviews it.
Right. And you've got to remember, too, that, you know, we implemented that plan, too, where these developments and developers, they're...
These developers are putting up so much money, too...
For that Station Camp corridor, yeah.
Of that corridor. So you've got to remember that, too. This development here, there's no telling what kind of money they're gonna have to put up for that improvement. It's based on, what's it based on?
It's a prorated share of depend, that is, depends on their impact.
Yeah. So, you know, you've got to remember that these developers are putting up money that that's going to improve that corridor, so...
Money or improvements, or most likely a combination of the two.
Yeah. But that's the way we've always done it, is that the, the traffic study comes after it, the final... Yeah. And we don't, we don't, we don't vote on that.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
But it's been like that forever.
Does it make sense to you?
Yeah.
It does, that we vote on it and approve it before we even know if the traffic's, if it's okay for us to have traffic this way?
Well, I think some of it has to do with the timing, because they could have the, how, how long is a preliminary master development plan good for?
It's good for three years unless they invoke a final master development plan on that property prior to that. Then it provides greater extended years for investing for the remainder of the project. Let me point out also, this property right now is all PGC. Essentially, when it was zoned, I guess the concept was that it would be a regional mall, which would generate a lot more trips than essentially halving the zoning and creating residential uses on the property. And there'll be a lot of internal capture, whereas a regional mall would not even provide for internal capture for residential uses or office uses. So they have a variety of uses out there that will reduce the trip generation conceptually from what the current zoning is.
And there is a connector road planned within this as well.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone further want to discuss? All right, seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance 01912-62. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance 02001-1, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $99,226.27 from Miracle Park Donations Revenue Fund to Miracle Park Expense Fund. So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02001-1. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item eight is second reading on ordinance 02001-2, Councilman Alexander.
This is an ordinance appropriating insurance recovery in the amount of $1,907.19 from the undesignated fund balance of the general fund for repair to damage to public works, John Deere tracks, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02001-2. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously.
I got that one. Number nine.
Oh, okay. This is first reading on ordinance 02001-4. Did you say you were taking it?
Yeah, I got so drunk.
Oh, I didn't know that. He was awful quiet. Councilman Alexander.
It's because he got so drunk.
I see.
Yeah, this is an appropriating Bonnaroo Work Grant Fund in the amount of $4,500 for the paint of a mirror on public works or recycling bin, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02001-4. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number 10 is first reading on ordinance 02002-6, Councilman Fennell.
So ordinance appropriating $50,000 for the Gallatin Music Festival. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm excited about the possibilities for the headliners this year.
Boy, we've been rolling around with them today. We've been getting opinions from all over, every organization, every age group, and, and we're going, oh, my goodness, this is... No. I think we just had an audience member express a preference for Jones yet. Not my preference, but lover, but not my preference. Anyway, this is second reading on ordinance 02002-6. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number 11 is first reading on ordinance 02002-10, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you. This is an ordinance appropriating funds in the amount of $3,000 for land appraisals. And that's along Smith Street, I believe. Thank you, and I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02002-10. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number 12 is resolution R2002-8, Councilman Alexander.
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate the purchase of property for improvement to Smith Street, where the City of Gallatin desired to purchase land for further improvement to Smith Street due in part to the proposed new courthouse complex in Gallatin, and where as funds are available from the undesignated fund balance for the purchase of these properties, and where the city council has authorized the mayor to negotiate the purchase of necessary properties with the total acquisition price not to exceed $600,000. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Gallatin authorize the mayor to negotiate the purchase of necessary property for the purpose of making further improvement to Smith Street and for the total acquisition price not to exceed $600,000, and council shall appropriate such fund for the purchase of the undesignated fund balance for the general fund, from the general fund at the appropriate time. Be it further, be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute all contracts and related documents for the purchase of these necessary properties to make the improvement to Smith Street, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect from and after found passage of public works. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? Okay, this is resolution R2002-8. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda this evening. It moves us now to other business. Should anyone on this council have anything they'd like to bring forward? Everybody's looking down. I guess not. All right. No other, other business this evening, so now we'll move to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. Come on up here if you'd like to speak. Just give us your name and address, and you'll have about five minutes.
How long, again?
Five.
Mayor, I'm sure Engineering wants to make an exciting announcement that they heard from Railroad Company today.
Oh, yeah. Well, I heard from Ms. Wilkinson.
Charles Brinkley. My name is Charles Brinkley. I live at 155 Alpha Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee, In case y'all want to send me a check. I'm, I'm here briefly. What I want to do, I'll be remiss, and I know everybody up here knows that Martin Luther King Day was celebrated January the 20th, every 30th Monday in January of each year. And what I'd like to do is shout out some thanks on behalf of our local president of our branch of the NAACP in Gallatin, who sponsored the parade, would like to thank the City of Gallatin, those who braved the weather to come out and march. It was cold, but, you know, we always got the month of May. We, we want to thank the Gallatin Police Department for their leadership, their protection. Chief Bandit for providing snacks and warm drinks for us, those who were marching. I thought that was very appropriate, and we, we are so appreciative for that, Chief Bandit. Some of your council people marched with us, Fennell and Alexander. I know, I didn't see everybody. But I just want to thank the Sheriff Department, the emergency medical of Sumner County, those who provided transportation from First Baptist Church to and fro to lead the cars at the Gallatin High School. And we want to thank Chief Victor Williams, the Fire Department, providing a fire truck, and you know what the fire truck was for. And we'd like to thank the sanitation department for providing a sanitation truck. I think you know what this is for, but everything went well. We had a program at the Gallatin Senior High School where some of you all participated, Mayor. We appreciate you. We want to just thank everybody for that. We know this trip, that the thing that Martin Luther King stood for, his legacy and life, the principles, which we were striving. We're on that road. It's under construction right now, but this... It's under construction right now, but this day is set each year, and we will continue to march, we will continue to fight, and we'll continue to pray until victory is won. My time is up, and I thank you for yours.
Your time probably wasn't up, but thank you, and thank you to all the organizers. It's always a very good event. I was very impressed with how well-attended it was this year in spite of the weather. And you had a new sponsor, you had Chick-fil-A this year sponsoring, which was nice, so.
And we had Executive Director of the Gallatin, Jerome Malone, PJ Davis, who was our grand marshal, appreciated us so much, too.
And a wonderful speaker.
Thank you all, you're beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Next?
Pascal Gervens, one three three five Long Island Park. Last week, I came here talking about the moratorium, so I'll just give you an update. I know you're going to put it on a, on a work session next week, but I got in, I've been in contact with Ms. Coral Lousky, who's senior planner at Germanton, and she's sending me plenty of information, and I tried to, I start to understand their process and how they did that. So, I will get something ready for you next week when I have the working session, so to help the discussion, if you're okay with that? No? Yeah? Yeah? Okay.
It's entirely up to you.
Okay.
I think our planning department and others, and our attorney have certainly done a lot of work to prepare for that discussion as well.
Oh, I understand that, but, you know, at least we all work.
You're welcome to share your opinions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
At all? Thank you, Mr. Gervens.
Oh, you want more? I can give you more.
No, no, no.
Why, we, you, you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items?
No more free speech? Bye.
Anyone else?
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. Three seven zero six six two five two zero. I'm a studier of history, and I have something in my hand right here, it's a cap, and it has something to do with history. And this is from Mr. Brinkley's information. This is Black History Month, and I'd like to share with you what this cap's all about. And this has to do with during World War II, there was a group of people called the Tuskegee Airmen, who served our country well, and especially with regard to the B-24s going across the Alps into Germany and bombing the fire out of them. One of our presidential candidates did that when a B-24, his name was George McGovern. And I also had the opportunity to have, in my lifetime, a fellow that served as navigator on one of those planes. And one of the problems that those people had was, they called them the Flying Coffins. They were built at Will Run in Detroit. And the reason why it was very important that these guys flew these, flew these B-51s was the fact to keep those planes from getting hit, because if they got hit, the engine went out, they had to go across the Alps, so guess what? They had a problem. A lot of them got dumped over in Germany and got, the crews got picked up by the Germans. But, we want to accentuate the positive because of the, uh, things that they shared for our country. In fact, one of these gentlemen that flew one of these planes was at the coin toss of the Super Bowl. He was over a hundred years old. So, we've got to thank those people and remember what the contributions were for the people in the black community is to our country. And we tip our hat to you, Brother Brinkley, and we appreciate what you all do on our behalf. The second thing is, I'd like to bring up tonight, was I hear through the vine that there was five thousand dollars given by the Lions Club toward putting together with the fund drive for, uh, Miracle Park. That Miracle Park was, is very important to our city. We appreciate that, and we need to not necessarily tax and spend, but we also need to give where it needs to be done for projects that we need here in the city. And with that, I give you my due.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer, and we are grateful to the Lions Club, and I've told a certain member that we do need to get a picture made at some point with Mr. Brown and some Lions Club members, so.
Yeah, you can get daddy lines up.
I've tried. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Okay, I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed, and I would ask that either, Mr. Wilkinson, you want to share the news that you heard today from Of course, if we take it with a grain.
Yeah, take it with a grain of salt, but I was in contact with CSX, and they're saying they're going to be in town next month, and so we're coordinating with them on doing the, or the crossing replacements at Southwater and Steam Plant Road. But, take it with a grain of salt. We've been told this several times, but it seems pretty sure they are going to be in town for sure.
Yeah, yeah. I think a very similar announcement was made this time last year, so, but I will be optimistic, and I think we'll all be excited to see it get done next week, next month, so thank you. Anything else this evening?
Just have one thing, that in case some people didn't know, this, most of you remember, some of you do, I know Craig do, remember Sister Malone, Dr. Delfin Malone, was the longest-serving councilperson in the history of Summerton County, a black lady, and this room is named after her, Dr. J. Delfin Malone. And also, another Malone lady was a council, councilwoman, Yvonne Malone, I don't think they were in any relation, but she was responsible for this day that we celebrate here in Gallatin on Dr. Martin Luther King Day, so I want to hats off to both those two ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor, say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening. Thank you for being with us tonight. We'll see you again.